I'd like to call to order the council meeting for Tuesday, July 5th, 2016. May we all stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the power of which stands in recognition of our independence from the judiciary, justice, or law.
Please be seated. Madam Secretary, may I please have roll call?
Marla Milner, Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Heather Lewis, Hakeem Jones, Derrick Perry, Sonya Sanders.
Here. May a member of council like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of council workshop held June 21st of 2016? All in favor? The ayes have it and the meeting minutes are approved. Earlier this evening, we did not have executive session. The next order of business we have is the proclamation to recognize the Narsetown Ladies' Track Eagles. May you please come up front? And coach and assistant coach.
It picks up everywhere else.
So presented before us, we have head coach Milton Williams, assistant coach Janaye Weldon, Sianie Sanders, Shilla Daye, Jayana Webb, Janaye Cook, and Charity Guy. This is a proclamation to honor the Narsetown Lady Eagles Track and Field Team, whereas Lady Eagles competed in the New Balance National Track and Field Championships held in Greensboro, North Carolina, at North Carolina A&amp;C University. Whereas Jayana Webb placed second in the Emergent E-Lite 400 meters with a time of 55.88, and Sianie Sanders ran 100.44 in the freshman 400 meters as well. Whereas Jayana Webb raced to a new school record in the Emergent E-Lite 200 meter prelims with a time of 23.73, a time which is currently fourth in the U.S. Whereas the 4x400 meter relay team of Charity Guy, Sianie Sanders, Shilla Daye, and Jayana Webb won the Emergent E-Lite 4x400 with a new school record time of 349.05. Whereas the 4x100 meter relay team finished sixth with a time of 46.70, earning the Lady Eagles their first All-American 4x100 meter status in school history. Now therefore, the Narsetown Municipal Council recognizes and honors the members of the Narsetown Lady Eagles Track and Field Team, Jayana Webb, Sianie Sanders, Shilla Daye, Janaye Cook, Charity Guy, and their head coach Milton Williams for their outstanding performance and proclaim this day as Narsetown Lady Eagles' Day.
First, I want to thank the council for the great award. The ladies that you see up here, it's been a testament of their hard work and dedication and sacrifice throughout the season. It's not an easy road sometimes coaching for teenage, well, five teenage young ladies. It's a lot to balance at times, but they really make it worth it through their hard work and dedication and their commitment to excellence. One of the things that we really try to do is support them in whatever endeavors they have to sort of overcome and try to strive for, give them support to make mistakes as young people, but also making sure that we give them the support they need to grow as young people and be successful on and off the track. So this group of ladies that you see up here are all returning for next year, and one of the things that was not put in the proclamation was the fact that we have a lot of sophomores and juniors and even freshmen. So the fact that they are young but greatly experienced, and this is just the start of something that we're really trying to do at the high school in our flight to really have a top-notch program, not just locally, but on a national level. So definitely just my hats off to these young ladies and also Coach Weldon, who's a great help as a mentor and also as a young coach, trying to really learn underneath myself and even learn by making mistakes and doing things that, you know, make you a better coach. So they make me look good, so I thank them.
Vice President Perry, do we have any announcements this evening?
Yes, I do, and I apologize for not getting it to Councilwoman Perry, I did mention it. And this is to everyone, there's an opportunity out of Philadelphia, there's a nonprofit organization called The Mighty Writers, and they are wanting to be in the Guinness Book of World Records. So their goal is to get at least 3,000 young people ages, I think, seven to 17, to all write a paragraph on the art museum steps. So I reached out to them to see if Narsetown, if it was just a Philly thing or not, but they said that Narsetown can participate. So we're looking to get a big group of kids to go down to the art museum and potentially help this organization get into the Guinness Book of World Records. We would also be mentioned in that if we bring, you know, a significant number of kids. So it would all be free, it's July 26th, so if anyone's interested, please reach out to me, Heather Lewis, H. Lewis, at narsetown.org.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lewis. I'm going to add two items to the agenda. So I would need a member of council to make a motion to open the agenda to the municipal snow emergency route, as well as the request for the intermunicipal license transfer. Any public comments regarding those two items? May I please have someone come forward, I'm sorry, Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments?
Yes. Robert Toporik.
Good evening, council members. My name is Robert Toporik. I spent about seven years in Narsetown on West Marshall Street distributing low-cost, high-quality refurbished computers to families, schools, and organizations. And then we moved to Audubon because the landlord owed $70,000 and he wanted to have the property back, and we found another place to move to. And we're a small nonprofit, we're run by a seat of our pants with minimal funding, and we've still managed to distribute more than 14,000 computers reaching over 70,000 kids. And Narsetown, we've helped a number of families in Narsetown, but I've never had the support of this council. And I'm here tonight to just introduce myself, let you know that we have a technology center in Audubon that kids can come and volunteer. We've had many kids from here volunteer, and they've learned stuff about technology, they got them into great colleges, and now have them in great jobs. And every one of our computers is loaded with amazing learning software. We're the only nonprofit organization in the country that's authorized to distribute that learning software on our computers for free, it's about $500 worth of software. And what I've come to discover is that preschool is too late. So as I study poverty and I study early childhood education and that whole conversation, the achievement gap starts at home and that's where it can end. And with our computers and our software, which is critical for every family to have, and I just thought it'd be useful to let you know, I left a question, I left some papers on everybody's desk, and those of you I didn't have enough for, I left my cards, feel free to call me. And, you know, I'd really love to have you come visit tomorrow. We'll probably have anywhere from 15 to 20 volunteers, some of them are kids in the autistic spectrum, the Pathway School has kids come and volunteer all year long, and they do amazing jobs. And we're open Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday from 10 to 3:00, and sometimes on Thursdays, but if you want to make a special arrangement, meet me there and see what we're doing, I'd love to have. Any questions? Oh, I have a question, have any of you ever heard of us? Good, a couple people? Okay, good, all right, good. So now all of you have heard of us. So thank you, we have about 500 computers sitting in our technology center that need a home right now. We have about 100 laptops that need a home right now, and the laptops are anywhere from $85 to $200. And the desktops are anywhere from, they're either $65, $140, and then we have some that are a little bit higher end. We make it really hard for people, all they have to do is write us a letter, pay the administrative fee, come pick up their computer, and on the day that they come, from time to time, we have all the looks and stuff for something to do, monitors and tests, we ask people to volunteer for an hour or so. If we don't have anything for them, we just give them the computers and send them home. So I hope to see you soon, and if you don't, I'll be here next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Chad Hoffman?
Hello, I'm Chad from Senator Leach's office. I'm just dropping by to remind everyone that on July 29th, which is a Friday night, we're having Senator Leach's Annual Kids Fair, it's from 5:30 to 7:30. Free admission for any families, there's going to be free food, free games, and free zoo admission. With your permission, I'd love to just drop off flyers on that table for people to grab, and I hope to see all of you there, and everyone in the audience is invited as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bee Bola?
I have a question regarding parking, how that works out. I live on a place called Nassau Place, and there's a, oh, Bee Bola 205 Nassau Place. And my question is, where I live, there is a building, there's a building that's now like a brain center, brain injury center, and the employees, they have a place to park, they have like their own parking lot, but yet they park, we're speaking for a number of residents, yet they park on our block, and we have, I don't know if they have a high turnover or what, but I just, I don't know what to do, because our block captain has reached out to their manager and they just, it's, they have shift work, so it's lousy in the morning and at night. We don't know what to do. So that's why I'm here to figure out.
She tell it.
How about you send me an email and I'll give you a call and we'll figure it out?
Okay.
All right?
Can I have your card?
Sure.
Thank you.
Betty Ann McPherson?
Hi, my name is Betty Ann McPherson, I'm the block captain of 11 on the block of Green Street. And what I want to talk about is the area which I live in, areas which other people live in. We have 1125 Green Basin Street, bushes, grass, it's so high it's unbelievable. Thursday, somebody came by to start cutting it down. What happened was, I heard he said, he's not doing anymore because it's too high and not reaching. At 1125, it is up to the people who live there to cut it down. I had seen owner, and I was asking him why he's not cutting, so it's not my problem, it's up to the people that live there, and I think it's unfair. We have 1202, bushes are still so high. I live in 1100 block, and if I go out back, you cannot see over the bushes. You have 1530 Marley Street coming down to Wood Street, where the bushes and everything is cutting over the fences. You have the 600 block of Green Street, you go down to Marshall Street, you make a lefty and turn, 203, 205, 203, 207, as I'm walking down, you can see all these bushes leaning over on other people's property. We, not me, but we have, well, I'll say, we have asked the code enforcement to come to several of our meetings. Sometimes he's too busy, what's the thing? But our organization is just as important as everybody that's up here, and we do need the help, and we'd also like to see you at some of our meetings and stop being turned down, I do, which you don't come. We have a lot of places in Narsetown, when I walk around, the bushes are so high, I'm trying to think of other places. But I wish somebody would investigate 1125, Green and Basin, that is an outrage. And as you walk up, as I was going down to Cal Street, all the way down to 600 block, all the way up to the 1600 block of DeKalb, you have trees that are leaning over which you have to duck, and you have grass growing underneath that nobody that's, I don't know who's supposed to take care of it. You have 900 block of DeKalb Street, a woman who was out there sweeping stopped me, she said, "What can I do?" I says, "Come to the meetings, complain about it." The debris at 904 DeKalb Street is terrible. You can get your gloves on and just throw it, that's what people do around here. Narsetown is a beautiful place, but if we don't have the help and the integrity of the people that are supposed to help us, why do you always want us to help you? But you have to help us. But my, I'm directing mine to the code enforcement that needs to be done. If you don't have enough people in your organization, then hire more people. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Madam Secretary, do we have any communication?
No, we don't.
Next order of business we have is finance. Ms. Burkett, could you please give us a brief summary of the Narsetown Paid Fire Fighter Pension Plan Amendment 2016-2?
Thank you, Madam President. Presented for you and for council for consideration is a request to approve, a motion to approve advertising of ordinance 16-10 to adopt changes to the Narsetown Pension, Firefighters Pension Plan Amendment as a result of the plan trustees, that was proposed by the plan trustees as a result of a Scribner's error. A Scribner's error was an oversight or a language issue in the original document that was proposed by the pension board trustees attorneys, and they are asking that, they've adopted the plan, the plan amendment to remove the word "self-directed" from the pension plan amendment that was adopted. We met a meeting last week Tuesday, and the pension board, pension board approved the changes to the pension plan as a result of that request and the notification of the Scribner's error. So therefore, we are now presenting to council to adopt the ordinance that would, to advertise the ordinance that would reflect that change to remove the word "self-directed."
Thank you, Ms. Burkett. Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the advertising of the proposed ordinance number 16-10 to adopt Narsetown Paid Fire Fighter Pension Plan Amendment number 2016-2 to correct a Scribner's error in Amendment 2014-2 regarding the establishment of a deferred retirement option plan?
So moved.
Discussion question. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Marla Milner, Olivia Brady, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Derrick Perry, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it, that motion is approved. Next order of business we have is code in regards to the HARP certificates, Michael Simonson?
Yeah, the code office has five HARP certificates that were voted on in the month of June. The first one is 667 Corson Street, that was to renovate a garage to a residential structure. The plans have been looked at, this renovation is going to have to be done per code and the HARP specs they laid out. 601 Cherry Street is changing the storefront by enlarging some windows and some decorative wood. 932 West Washington Street is to repair the front porch. 217 West Erie Street is some windows, front door, and some wood. And 337 West Marshall Street is the front steps, porch, and a rail.
Thank you, Mr. Simonson. Any questions or discussion? Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve HARP certificates of appropriateness as follows, 667 Corson Street, 601 Cherry Street, 932 West Washington Street, 217 West Erie Street, 337 West Marshall Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing none? The ayes have it, that motion is approved for HARP certificates. Next order of business we have is the snow emergency routes. Mr. Jones, would you care to provide us with a brief summary?
Certainly, thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
At its March meeting, the council had directed staff to revise and develop a snow emergency routes ordinance for your consideration. Staff did that, and in your May workshop meeting, we presented a revised ordinance, got input from council, council deliberated, and at the end of that deliberation, advised staff that we advertise the ordinance for council consideration for passing. In that ordinance, council designated several streets as snow emergency routes, and for the record, if I'll read those streets off, the following streets were designated as snow emergency routes. Main Street from East Municipal Limits to Forest Street, DeKalb Street from South Municipal Limits to Johnson Highway, Swede Street from Lafayette Street to Markley Street, Marshall Street from New Hope Street to Forest Street, Sturgis Street from Harding Boulevard to Forest Street, Erie Street from Fornance Street to Forest Street, Lafayette Street from Ford Street to Markley Street, Johnson Highway from New Hope Street to Chain Street, South Lane only, Chain Street from Johnson Highway to Harding Boulevard, Harding Boulevard from Chain Street to Markley Street, New Hope Street from Marshall Street to Johnson Highway, Fornance Street from Harding Boulevard to Sandy Street, Stanbridge Street from Jackson Street to Sturgis Street, Jerebun Street from Sandy Street to Carmen Street. This ordinance was advertised properly in June, twice during the month of June, and at this point, we're putting the ordinance, ordinance number 16-09 before council for consideration for adoption. Should council adopt the ordinance, then the next order of business for staff would be then to procure the necessary and install the necessary signage to designate the routes that you have selected.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 16-09 establishing snow emergency routes to establish regulations for operation and parking of motor vehicles during snow emergencies as defined herein and designated by the Municipal Council of Narsetown during snow and ice storms and during snow and ice removal from municipal streets and setting forth penalties for violation of the same, repealing inconsistent ordinances, providing for separability, and establishing an effective date.
So moved.
Discussion question. Councilman Perry?
Did we, did we speak with the county in trying to maybe get some temporary parking when the snow routes, for some of the snow routes, when it does snow?
As you recall, Councilman Perry, we did, absolutely did do that. As part of the discussion we had in the May workshop, we also noted that the county was kind of lukewarm to that ordinance, I'm sorry, to that, a full-fledged commitment to making it available, and as a result, council then designated us to proceed.
How about, how about with SEPTA also?
The same thing, we did, we did talk to SEPTA, those discussions are still ongoing, but there has not been any real, real progress from that.
Thank you.
So I have a comment, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Brady?
Thank you, Madam President. I know that we are trying to get people to engage in ReadyMonCo and also our Narsetown app and social media, but what other kinds of communication, bearing in mind that there are some people who don't use their mobile phones or are not connected to the internet, are we going to utilize in order to make sure that all the residents who live in these snow emergency routes are well aware of the ramifications that will occur if their cars are left?
There are going to be a number of things we're going to do. We will do a direct mailing to those addresses on those streets, but we also, and Mr. Dennebo and I had this discussion, as we look at some of the standard operating procedures that we will undertake to affect snow management, snow and ice management, one of the things that he's already suggested is that he wants to host some town hall meetings to be able to go out as well and talk to folks about what's going on, not only with the routes, but also some of the SOPs that we'll be putting in place under the new, under the new snow procedure.
Councilman Jones?
You guys talked about penalties and violations, what were some of the penalties you guys spoke of, and would it be something the Narsetown Police will be enforcing, or will be private contractors?
No, the fines will be Narsetown fines that will be, that will be enforced. I believe it says forth in the ordinance the amounts of those fines, and I don't have it right in front of me, $300 that is, $300 is the limit, it can't, it won't exceed $300 in terms of the fines, but the fines, there will be some fines particularly related to parking that are the responsibility of the police to enforce, but no contractors will be enforcing. Towing will be according to the towing contract, that's already in existence.
We have a motion on the floor. Madam Secretary, may I have a roll call, please?
Sorry? Marla Milner?
Aye.
Olivia Brady?
Aye.
Marlin Milner, Olivia Brady, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Derek Perry, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it, and the ordinance 16-09 passes. Next order of business we have is the solicitor, and that's in regards to the intermunicipal license transfer.
Yes, Madam President. We had a request from the applicant looking to transfer a liquor license from Upper Morland Township to 548 DeCopp Street in Norristown. It's going to involve a different kind of license than what is currently in place, and so the process is as follows. We're going to have to advertise this twice. There'll be a public hearing on the liquor license transfer, which would be scheduled for probably your meeting in August. That would be the timing that would work. So, all council's doing tonight is to approve the advertisement of that, of that hearing and schedule it for the first meeting in August. I contacted council for the liquor license applicant and made sure that they're well aware that they're going to pay for the cost of advertising of this in the Times-Herald.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you. I'm not sure if it's appropriate at this time, but, or whether or not you can do that, but has the restaurant spelled out the changes that they're making to their establishment that is why they're desirous of this change of license?
They have not to us specifically, but we'll have the opportunity to question them when they come before us at the public hearing. They were just making the request for us to schedule a public hearing on this so they can present more information to council.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Councilman Perry.
We don't have a whole lot of information on it right now.
We don't have a lot of information. We just have a request to schedule the hearings.
Right.
Yeah. All you're voting on is the advertising. We're not voting on any transfer or anything.
Would a member of council like to make a motion? I'm sorry, Ms. Councilman Milner. Question, discussion?
I'm just going to usurp what you were about to say. I'll for motion to approve Resolution 16-134.
No, you're not approving. You're not approving the resolution, just to be clear, just for the advertisement of the hearing.
Just the advertisement.
It's referenced in the resolution, that's all.
You want to add that? So, just to be clear, we are asking council to, hold on a second, approve the advertisement of Resolution number 16-134, only for the record.
That's correct.
Okay. And do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Councilman Milner, and did we have a second?
Yes.
Madam Secretary, may I have a roll call, please?
Marlin Milner, Olivia Brady, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Derek Perry, Sonya Sanders.
Aye. Resolution number 16-134 is approved and passes. Would a member of council like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Meeting adjourned. So, these folks are coming back next month.